Call of meeting to order and we stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call please.
All board members are present along with the president, Ms. Maska and Mr. Martin.
A motion for adoption of the agenda.
One move.
And a second?
Second.
Additions, subtractions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to item five would be communications, recognition, open forum report.
We had a couple of questions in the, in the room here and some on the YouTube and the committee will have to meet and get some answers together and then get them back out.
Moving on to board committees. First would be wellness, which we did not need to.
Steph had a lot of really good ideas. They talked about some incentives. Something that's a little bit different, kind of, I think they've done some plant things. We talked about maybe doing some health monitor devices. Kind of outside the normal bit, but trying something maybe a little bit more trendy, just as a reward. Talked a little bit about some of the changes to the lunch menu, being more festive with Cinco de Mayo, showing to do, yeah, those cultural things. Those kind of fun it.
Budget and finance?
I want Mark. Discuss budget.
Yeah.
Upcoming budget. We'll fist your hand a little bit about next year. Some positives and negatives.
Something's in the air, up in the air.
Right, depending on what happens with legislature. Nothing yet, nothing's etched in stone until the legislature's done.
About capital money and what would we do without the F M? Maybe possibly tackle a few of those bony things from referendum.
Some concerns, I think, with the unemployment.
Oh, with the legislature.
Legislature. If they don't, if there's no money, if they don't put any money into it, we're on a, on the hook for a lot of money.
But that's all schools.
Right.
Right. Then the fairs or what?
Nine month employees.
Nine month employees could collect unemployment.
Okay. Two, three hundred thousand?
Both going down?
Yeah.
And I think you said there was money in the bill first and then they took money out of the bill? Is there money back in yet?
And then they took away levy authorities.
PTA?
So PTA had their, the kids did the fun run and it was very successful with eighteen thousand six hundred seventy dollars coming in. That includes the corporate sponsors for the T-shirts that every kid got, all those T-shirts. Lot of local businesses sponsoring the fun run. And Jan Kavista, I wanted to give a shout out to her. She worked tirelessly to make that happen. The NHS kids volunteered to do that throughout the day to mark the kids' shirts as they made their laps. So that was a great fundraiser. And then the art classes, they did the thank you posters, tell the local businesses up on the wall. And they'll be tie dyeing the T-shirts in their art classes as well. Mr. Mitchell was able to come out and cheer the kids out, out on a little bit, so that was great. So then, of course, that's fundraiser for a lot of the things that the PTA does and we talked about some of those things. Bus driver appreciation, we'll be getting gift cards and teacher appreciation for the elementary teachers going to a taco bar coming up here. And roller skating coming up. Of course, the classes each get to have a certain amount per grade level for their field trips, help with busing and admissions and things like that. So PTA has done a lot for that, to help the elementary and all that to run great. And the kids will be doing a Ninja Anywhere Challenge course like they did last year, kind of as a reward for the fun.
District technology?
We've talked about, Steve talked about Chromebook collection would be May twenty fourth. Carrie Schlesberg kind of gave us a rundown on what she teaches in elementary at each grade level. Every grade gets digital citizenship, cyber bullying, that kind of stuff, every year she talks about that, so, so that's a good thing. She went through the other things that she's gone, that she teaches in each grade level, so that was, was interesting to see. Talked about C-Mets meeting and they're looking at their offerings and services. They had a discussion on that. They're also, the school's also looking at reevaluating which online programs they want to keep. Some have changed since COVID. We needed them then, do we need them now? It all costs money, so they're, Amy is, is sending information or trying to get information on everybody on what, what programs we should be keeping and which ones we can get rid of. So, because they all cost money, of course. So, yeah, looking at that kind of stuff. Anything else that you're spec?
See, what do you, see?
Um, we heard from State Representative Heather Edelson. She's got a act that she is writing, the Reading Act or the Read Act. And that this runs curriculum that allows schools to have curriculum free of cost that supports the science of reading. And so that's what she is writing up. She talked about how though there will be a literacy plan report for each district then coming out of this, where you'll be able to look at other districts to see what kind of training they're doing and what their results are. And she also talked about, like versus we've already invested in letters training. She mentioned that there should be a way to pay that back or to reimburse districts for money that they've invested in programs that, such as letters. And somebody brought up requests that they not be in, within the reading materials, not have politically charged materials like more politically neutral. And she said there definitely will be options and flexibility for that. She, she did say, and she gave her email to all of us, tell her now, so she can fix anything that we see in that bill. She's very much wanting feedback on that bill. And then Brad talked about, of course, the unemployment insurance for the summer workers. And his frustration with the fact that we really haven't even seen a nod toward equalization. Said we're policy orphans. Is this an education issue or a tax issue is where it always comes back to. But just again, underlining the worthwhile value of seed. Making property tax systems work in Minnesota. And he did say as well, of course, there's the increase in the formula, but we possibly be at a loss in the bottom line of these bills, such as the unemployment insurance, which I saw did pass out of the, out of the House on Friday. So they're working on it with the Senate. I didn't see if they had anything on it today with the Senate. So.
Is that separate, is that, you know, bigger bill or is that separate?
Last I saw, it was still on the House of Representatives. We don't have one to pull it out.
The lady who's writing the bill on reading is through what? She's Representative Heather Edelson. She's from Edina. So that's not something that's going to be in this year? No, it's, I, it's on something she's just working towards. Well, yeah, I'm not sure exactly the timing on it. She said, but get to her now so that as it, before it works its way through the legislature. So I really don't know for sure. But she did, Brad just talked about kind of the impending storm with everybody seeing where the schools are getting all this funding. But if there's other things that are costing us a lot of money, will it look like we don't need to pass any levies? With all the money that's being sent that way, but the things that need to get paid for them by us.
Professional development?
Sort of on the hook today.
Yeah, she is. I did for a lead. So this one, they talked at the staff development meeting about a book study and that they're making audio books, books available as well. And they'll be looking at science and that will require part of the staff development time that's left. They'll be revisiting literacy and looking at what will the chosen screeners be? Math, possibly having reps come in. Continuing that, also possibly a suicide prevention that would need an hour. And hoping that there could be some summer paid time for teachers to collaborate. But yeah, it was interesting. It's not normally my, one of my committees, but it was interesting to see what they talked about in staff development for elementary.
Moving on to administrative reports.
Yes, good evening, everybody. Just that time of year, just a lot of things going on. So this Wednesday, we have the Students of Excellence banquet at the St. Cloud Heritage Convention Center. Congratulations to our honorees and their parents, Ellie Heller, Lauren Deber and Reagan Mueller will be dependents for that. They're enjoying their company, so. May second, we've got a prom challenge safety presentation with the presenters Chief Wilson, Officer Tyler. Thanks to NHS for their assistance with that. Split them up into two different groups just to, to get the message across. Prom is coming up, it's on the sixth. We've got student registration, that's going to tend to recur next Monday, so kids will be doing that. That'll be mandatory. Different levels for each group of students. Awards night, there's information for you get Wednesday, May seventeenth, seven PM. Start you, the board members on the stage and then as soon as we get the scholarship portion, we'll let you go sit in company seats after that. So I think the kids really appreciate, the seniors really appreciate having an opportunity to congratulate them on the front stage. Senior class trip, get that coming right around the corner, the Valley Fair on the twenty fourth. Last day of classes for seniors and practices on the twenty fifth. And then there's graduation commencement, obviously, on the twenty sixth. Seniors voted this year again to have their graduation to include Bridgewater photos and ceremony parade through town. So commencement will start at seven o'clock in order to have enough light to get through that. That's gone pretty well over the course of the last few years. That's just it in that show.
Mr. Anderson?
Good evening, everyone. But also Student Council just finished up a T-shirt design contest. The winners are listed there. They're, they were Annalee Gonzalez and Sydney Pointing. There's a picture of their T-shirt. There's going to be a little bit of a change and then they'll start collecting some orders for shirts. Couple of weeks ago, we went to a Twins game. It was absolutely gorgeous out and again, the Twins temperatures were eighty-three to eighty-five degrees. So it was a good evening to be at a Twins game. And we started the morning at the State Capitol, which went really well. And just a reminder, teach appreciation is coming up early in May and we're about halfway through MCA testing, which is going really well.
Any questions about that stuff? Thank you, man.
It's good evening. I too want to thank PTA for all their work and for Dan Kavista for helping with the fundraiser. The kids are definitely looking forward to that Ninja Anywhere course and the roller skating will be coming up. After MCA test week, testing week began, our testing today. And we'll test, fifth grade will test for the next three weeks and three, three, three and four will test for the next two weeks. It gets to be about three to four days. Again, to have some makeup days at the end of the week. Good news that we have already eighty students registered for kindergarten for next year. And so we're excited. We're hoping that the budget committee is totally in agreement because we have posted now first grade positions. So we are going to have four sections of K-one and three. And so we definitely are growing in the elementary and it's great to see. And we're excited to congratulate Carolyn and Ryan Marshall. They had, their son was born today. And so Brooks James was born and so we have another husband coming up.
What was the first name?
Brooks. So they have a second son and so we're excited for them. And then PTA also provides for our make field trips in all of the grade levels, finishing, making their final decisions. I know grades K-one, I haven't gotten their final date, but they're going, I have to do it. Like everybody else will be going somewhere in May after the testing, the end of the year old and try coordinate with their curriculum.
Do you know, Carol Holliday will get like through the summer for kindergarten registration?
Yeah, we, we had about eighty when we ended last year and we have eighty-six in our classroom.
Okay, but what is the, what is the telephone number for you? Is this hot, is this hot?
This is hot, yeah, yeah. Our sixth graders then will be going, are going through seventy-three. They're going to Robbie for next year. And so we're up about seven kids in the class. Overall, but we have it as low as sixty in the grade also. So, but we have three grades that are eighty or above, like we had two that went to eighty-six and went to eighty-eight.
Eighty is a strong number.
It is a strong number. Yeah.
Do you remember what that number a year ago was?
It was about eighty when we ended the year. Yeah.
But I meant like at this point registration?
Um, we were probably seventy-eight, seventy-nine when we opened the section. Because we knew we needed around twenty per class and so it looked like we were going to get there. Because we knew we had a couple more specialized kids that needed to register. And so by the end of the year, we were at eight. And we gained, I can theory, but it.
But a handful.
Anywhere is from three to six every summer in kindergarten.
Do you know on count, like the record? Like what's the highest?
For, for a new enrollment? New enrollments? For kindergarten, yeah.
We're seeing a trend right now where it's been pretty high. The trend before had been three sections. We're now seeing it trending pretty, well, for the last two years now to four sections.
When the school was built, it was a four-section school.
Okay.
And we became a three-section school. And so now half the school next year will be back to four.
I think, but eighth graders is the only four section and now down to three. Third grade?
No.
No, what, what, eighth grade has, how many years, then it goes?
So this year's, fourth graders? No, this year's second graders. Third is very small.
Yeah, third is sixty, in the public school.
Six years, we're since, the odd class.
Yeah.
Your son's class.
Our sons.
It's nice to see growth. Because we have eighty-six in our, our kindergarten and seventy-three in our, so it's nice to see the growth. Thank you.
Mr. Hunter?
Just one quick throw down the PTA fun run, one comment back, I agree. I didn't know that Jan Kavista had a twin and it looks just like her.
Wait.
Yes. Retired.
This is the first year retired.
Same way, I attended the C meeting down in cities, also reporting on Representative Edelson's Read Act. Very interesting. The, the unique thing it does is it pulls the third grade literacy component out of world's best workforce. And it kind of creates its own entity. Been an education long enough, there's a red flag flying up all of a sudden that this thing is going to take on a life of its own. I think it does have some good components to it. I sent it right away to Ms. Pearson and Amy Natch, our curriculum person, to take a look at it. You know, it's got some good things in there. One of the things it has in there is that by two thousand twenty-five, every school's going to have a literacy coach.
And who's going to pay for it?
Yeah.
So how much documentation is going to be required in this? Wheels are spinning here. It's a good idea. I mean, don't get the wrong idea. We, we've spoken about the need for literacy. We've been into the, the letters component for a couple of years now. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I mean, we're not going to argue that literacy is an important component of education, but. See a lot of unfunded mandates and a lot of documentation and a lot of, anytime you say you're going to have your own literacy coach, that in and of itself. So I, I, I don't want to at face value dismiss this, but that's why I have on and we will continue to monitor it as it, you know, moves forward the legislative process.
So this is going to get tied directly with the critical coordinators of the school?
Not necessarily, but possibly. Once again, it's.
That's a political answer.
Well, because that's the answer I guess for Representative Edelson, let's just ask those questions. It's in its infancy right now. She's in the process of writing it. So what it is right now may be much different from what it is when it actually gets to going, being created as a bill to go to law. Because it's got to go through all the committees and all the things and funding. So she's just bringing up as a case in point of one person's perspective on the importance of literacy and how she wants it to go forward.
Well, you know, the top question in today's society is going to be the critical race theory concept, appropriate books, you know, things like that. Is there going to be any kind of blocks?
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with this. This deals with elementary and phonics and whole languages and all that kind of stuff. How we teach literacy.
She did, somebody did ask that question about the materials and she said there would be choice within that. And as far as the, she said the literacy need would be a point person who could be like a special ed person or reading specialist. It could vary according to school.
So it's books on learning to read, not variety of books.
It's on understanding how students can learn to read. You know, it's more the process, the product versus not the things, tools that you use. Most of the elementary school, yeah, K through three.
Just replaces that K three component.
The dyslexia screening was a piece of it too, that they're realizing that younger and younger, you can actually pick out the kids that have been struggle. And if we can identify that, so I'm not sure what we all do with that here, the fire screening, but that definitely a piece of what she talked about. I know we do some training.
I think we do, we do screening all the way down to kindergarten and the letters, the letters that science or reading. We're lucky that the board and the district has already invested in that. That's where this has started from and it is just adding to it a little bit. But we're very excited that we are kind of ahead of the game on that because it is about the reading instruction in the classroom.
She definitely made it sound too that letters, which is what we use, was like the cream of the crop. There would be options, but letters took like by far the most training. And so I, I did feel like her, her.
And all of the elementary staff that have not gone for letters have signed up for it as well. So everyone in two years will be able to do it.
And that's K-three, or is there components for?
K-five.
Second bullet on there, Ms. Pearson, Mr. Druck and I attended a Centricare community meeting last week. Just kind of a roundtable discussion, if you're not aware, that there is going to be a critical shortage of healthcare in outstate Minnesota. Just want to start conversations, developing partnerships, how we can get more people excited about and going into the medical field. But I remember, right, there's a, Centricare has partnered up with the University of Minnesota to actually start a medical school in St. Cloud. To develop some of those health professionals. Get in touch with outstate Minnesota State too, that's all. That'd be somebody intriguing if we can keep them out here. And finally, this Wednesday, Sean Fellerward and I, we're going to walk through, that kind of broches topic a couple of different times. The grant has gone through. There is going to be a walking path about between daylight court and the school. And right now it does appear there's going to be enough money that it'll be a concrete path instead of asphalt. So we're going to need a walk through on that to, so that connects it up and students will have a safe walkway along, down the highway one sixty-eight.
And you, the fencing is still going to have to be removed.
Yeah, because it's got to be on the high end. Don't worry about a tree by the dugout.
Trees are limited out there.
I know, but they're on the high end. There's one tree that's kind of close to the sand. There's a smaller one that's a little bit farther south. And I know generally they don't like putting concrete or a tree. We'll see, we'll see what we can do. That'll be Wednesday morning, but it'll be good to have that on, a nice, safe pathway for students and community members, people in daylight court.
Or holes in my little, in my little steel, sit under.
Moving on to non-action items. For those who are visiting tonight or students who are attending, this next phase is our, part of our policy review. So the school district is governed by a long list of policies dealing with the number of different issues. Those policies generally need to be updated, maybe not every year, but every few years. And then there's new topics that come up and there's new policy to address those. The policies often come from Minnesota State Board of, or Association of School Boards. And the process that we do is to get a policy approved by the school board, it has to be read. Has to be presented to the school board twice and then on the third reading, it's approved by the school board. Tonight, these are all second readings, so we discussed them in some detail last, at the time of the last meeting. Tonight's going to sound kind of brief and quick and that's often what happens with the second reading because we didn't really make any changes between the first and the second reading. And that's what's the next stage of the.
Yeah, but there's a change in one of the second review.
Okay, so moving on to non-action items. First would be policy two oh six, public participation in school reading, second review.
No changes.
Questions or comments from school members? Moving on to hearing none, moving on to policy two eleven, criminal or civil action against school districts, policy two oh, two eleven.
No changes.
There aren't any questions. Moving on to policy four fourteen, mandated reporting of child neglect or physical or sexual abuse, second review.
No changes.
Policy four twenty-five, staff development, second review.
No changes and I did meet with the staff development committee on that policy. So they're aware of it. Had a great discussion, different components of that, mandated reporting, those type of things. So had a good discussion, that discussion will continue. That was a request of the policy committee.
And as a result of that, no changes.
No changes.
E would be policy five sixteen point five, overdose medication, second review.
Change made after discussion on page forty-five. Information you'll see on there and right as struck out that we will not take that medication on field trips. And because of that, also don't. And because of that also under A, that sentence was reworked. Also reference that. Idea of the medication not being taken on school trip, so all that has been struck out due to that discussion.
So it's in the news a little bit, it sounds like it's a fairly simple.
Buy it over.
After the meeting, the next day is on the news, invite it over the counter?
Yeah, there's no side effect to.
But you want a non-medical person to administer your kid though?
Well, no, but I mean, I felt better when I heard more about it, it sounds fairly safe.
The only one that can administer it is the nurse, right?
Or a trained doctor. Which train more than one? Yeah, which is where the gray area was.
Totally safe unless you're on chronic narcotics.
Correct.
Anyway, that was the change made in policy following that discussion.
There are no questions, moving on to item nine. A motion to approve the consent agenda listed.
So.
And a second.
Seconded.
Highlights or?
If you look through it, it's obviously a lot of hiring for summer schools, summer school teachers, summer school parents, summer school lifeguards, women instructors. We've got some coaches that are hired for the spring, all spring sports get going. Summer still. And you'll see at the end of the new hires, we have onboard for next year, a new counselor, Shelby Sawyer. Name should be familiar, she graduated from here. I get her for next year.
That Ms. Jackson is retiring?
Ms. Jackson is retiring. And Mr. Dubk and the staff are in the process of hiring that position, so. That's really the only open position right now, except. Ms. Jackson is. Kind of the highlights of that.
Questions, comments? Here?
Yeah, how soon are we going to be backfilling the girls' basketball? Just, and the only reason I'm thinking about that is, is all the summer programs that Evan had, participated or worked with. I think Mr. Ruff is in the process of trying to find those positions right now.
But I mean, he's. Would have to, but he's putting some calls. He's making phone calls and trying to arrange things for it. It's not like summer, summer leaves are going unattended.
That was the phone call I received. Karen, what was, what was going to happen this summer? And I said, I'm assuming there's going to be a plan, but I'll defer.
Jordan Wild's taking on a lot of that right now.
So you will, a couple.
The two leave requests are much pretty standard and they.
What?
The two leave requests.
What turtle?
Busy.
First not to put that on there anymore.
You just had to ask me.
Yeah, standard. Okay, nothing we need to be concerned about.
Are you watching?
No, more Dutchmen.
Any more questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item ten would be the treasurer's report, motion to approve the treasurer's report.
So move.
A second?
Second. It does look a little bit higher than normal, like than last, the past month, spending for March. Part of that includes we bought a new special ed van. We also were billed, what central ed billed us for two quarters in a row, like boom, right together. Which doesn't normally happen, so that was, that's what, why that looks so large. And then our payroll, we paid our winter coaches. So that's why payroll is a little bit higher. But if you looked at the expenditure revenue report, we're actually underspending compared to last year. The revenue was a little bit less as well, but that's because I haven't really drawn any of our federal money yet. Still sitting there waiting for me to make that draw, but I've been finalizing, cleaning everything up to make sure I have everything I need to make those draws. And those will happen probably this coming month, either the end of this month or next month.
Questions at all?
Did we get rid of anything?
Yeah, they phased out after ten years. Changing a lot too with that. What do you mean phase out? After ten years, you can only have a band transport for students for ten years of the life of them. Really?
So then why do they show?
Right now, we currently cycle at least two for staff to be able to use, because staff can still use them. And then when they get to the end, end like we trade them in, we probably do that.
If there are no further questions, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to action items. First would be donations and gifts. A motion to accept, approve the gifts and donations as listed. And a second?
Second.
Highlights you can show us?
A lot of great donations for activities, but also for a, a learning unit in middle school. What was the gentleman's name again, Mr. Anderson?
Orlando Ponce.
Orlando Ponce, brought him in, I was down there a couple of times to see what he was doing with our students down there, some really good. Not only physical units he was teaching, but also good life story things, things to learn about. Some rec T-shirts, Magnify, if you noticed that they donated sixty new purple chairs for new use in our gym. I'm sorry, what? I got some at the eighty of that. And some football jersey, money for football jersey and spring sports and prom food, so. Nice donations again for this time of year.
So the home team and the away team will have padded seats in the gym.
They look better.
They're going to be so happy.
They never got the bed, they got the metal chairs.
Beyond expressing our appreciation, any other comments or questions? We'll call.
Pat?
Yes.
We?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Becky? Yes.
Motion approved. So as we went through the second reading on the previous policies, there's three policies that have gone through two previous readings. And this is the, this is the point where we vote and the policy of approval becomes policy of the district. Policy five fifteen is the first policy, protection and privacy of student records. Motion to approve the policy five fifteen.
So move.
And a second? Second. We've not made any changes.
No changes to this one.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item C would be a motion for approval of policy five thirty four, school meal policy.
So.
And a second?
Seconded.
No changes?
No changes.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item D would be policy seven twenty two, policy regarding public data requests. A motion to approve?
So move.
And a second?
Seconded.
No changes.
David?
I don't know what process I got.
So much law.
I took dogs.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Tell me when you're ready. I know.
But when are we on?
Yeah.
Moving on to item E, a motion to approve the two thousand twenty three, two thousand twenty four academic calendar revision.
So move.
And a second?
I'll second.
Some concerns came up in regard to having a workshop day in the second. It was a long weekend that coincided with a understanding that our December first, practice e-learning day, can't do a practice e-learning day. Since statute, you can only use them on actual weather related or emergencies. So the first becomes, it's an actual workshop, the second goes back to a student contact day. And because of concerns that we're having this year, we're not in that territory yet. But we have to make sure that we move graduations to the May, May twenty seventh. So unfortunately. I'm sorry. Graduation's May thirty first. It was the twenty fourth, so it's going to be the Friday after, more or less, if you look at the last day of school there. So graduation, I got the dates. So May thirty first will be graduation next year, so make sure we put on that and let the community get it out. There still is a minimum requirement of hours and we certainly don't want to run into next year, we ran this year. Not have enough time for senior next year, so make sure we move. Thirty first.
There isn't really a way to get around that. No. Bring seniors back after they're walking through ceremony. And part of that's also not hanging on, sorry. Right? Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the twenty three, twenty four school calendar revision, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Moving on to item F, a motion to approve a world award of. For the ALC renovation to the Bright Lock construction.
It's a move.
Second. Saw the bid copy in there, it came, they had the lowest bid. It is firm and it is local, it's known, they're a good firm, so. Fortunately, bids came in a bit lower than we thought they were. So that will open up some possible opportunities for what central ed to do some other things with that scope of that project. That certainly would recommend it for a bright lock construction. If it don't do good work.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. A motion to close the meeting for the purpose of discussion, discussion, not negotiations and to take a three. Five minute break.
So move.
And a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.